Thank you. We're calling the meeting back to order. Um, the announcements um from closed session is this evening in closed session, the Board of Trustees voted to dismiss a building maintenance mechanic. The vote was unanimous with um trustee Dodd being absent. And I'm now going to item number six, public comment. Um, this public comment opportunity is governed by the California Brown Act by definition. This is an opportunity to hear concerns, perspectives and differing vantage points. The board is not a able under the Brown Act to engage in any level of conversation or discussion, but we look forward to this oppor- opportunity to gather community input. At this time, the board will devote up to fifteen minutes to review comment to the Board of Trustees regarding any subject not appearing as an agenda item for this meeting, but over which the board has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will occur at this time on such items, and each comment shall last no longer than three minutes. Is there any public comment?
I do not see any, no. Just giving him time to raise hand.
Great, thank you. And um now item number seven, the consent calendar. Um, does any just you have any questions um about the consent calendar at this time, at this time? Is there a motion? Um, to approve?
Second.
Great, and that was trustee Olson with the motion and trustee Baker with second. Any, all those in favor? Any opposed? And jumping down to um item number eleven, academic affairs. And Dr. Mora?
Yes, so um a little bit of information about the educational master plan, and actually, this is part of my board report. So it might be helpful to be able to look at that. Catherine, would you mind? I know we're a little bit out of sync on that. So um over the summer, we've been in the process of um selecting a consulting firm. Thank you so much. Yes, and so um VP Reeves, uh Senior Dean Robin and I met initially to talk about what we were seeking in the educational master plan. And as you know, this is such an important grounding document, and our most recent update was actually a couple of years back, and so we are in need of something that is current, that reflects the changed needs that we've seen, uh particularly post pandemic with lots of things that are quite different now, and that also reflects current community needs. And so the educational master planning process, um one of the things that is very different in what we're trying to do is to have something that's very concise, um very clear, very to the point, um and that really is built on data and a best understanding of all of the members of our community and all of our constituent groups. And so having um a firm to help us with that process will enable us to to move faster, but also be more inclusive as it requires a lot, a significant amount of planning to ensure that everybody is involved. And so over the summer, we um sent out the RFP for a proposal for the EMP. We got back a number of um proposals, and with the help of the planning co-chair, who's a faculty member, Amanda Badgett, and our new academic senate president, Matt Kronzer, we um created a rubric to evaluate the proposals. We met in committee several times to discuss them. We also uh conducted an interview process. And um after that extensive um set of conversations, we are recommending that West Ed be the group that we hire for this process. Um, West Ed put forward a really comprehensive uh proposal that was geared very clearly to what we were asking for. I also conducted the reference checks from West Ed and they were um spectacularly wonderful. Uh, so I have a lot of confidence in the work that they have done, their track record in supporting EMPs. And um we are recommending that we be able to move forward with contracting with them for the coming year with the goal of completing the educational master plan um and submitting it to you for your review by the May twenty twenty four board meeting. And one of the things that's going to be very important in this process is, as I mentioned, the inclusion of all of our constituent C groups and with um leadership from a steering committee for the educational master plan development. So we're not we're not handing something off to West Ed. We're working with them and asking them to support us. And in our steering committee, we will have uh myself as the queen person, and we'll also have Robin, of course, in her role with um institutional research planning and planning, and our faculty representatives, classified representatives, and student representatives. And um we, we really, really want the students to join us. So we're going to take some concrete steps to make sure that it's possible for them to do so. So um that is our proposal, a tiny bit about the budget. Um, there is a hundred thousand dollars already in the budget to support this work. And there's a a small amount that is over that for the cost of the contract. That will be covered by our Title V um grant, which is focused on guided pathways and student success. And guided pathways is a critical component of our educational master plan. So between those two, we'll be able to support the um terms of this contract.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
Prove to approve.
A second.
Thank you, trustee Reeves with the motion and trustee Krishnaf with the second. Um, all those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, motion passes. And then item eleven point two, Dr. Mora, report on career education by annual review.
Yes, I'd like to invite our senior dean Doug Marriott to present on this topic.
Thank you, Dr. Mora. Good evening. I'm grateful to be here. This report happens every couple of years. It's a great way to highlight what we do in career education and workforce development at Napa Valley College. Um, so I've prepared some slides. Next slide, please. I'll share with you the purpose of it, how we've aligned. Uh, we hosted a workforce policy summit because it's important that the work that we do is aligned with labor market needs here in the Napa Valley. There's a long, extensive list that I'm sure many of you are aware of, of the career education programs we have. I'll tie it to the CTE outcome survey, so you can see the wage gain that our students gain, um placement rates, and opportunities to look ahead. Next slide, please. So the the first quote comes from our institution, that we prepare students for evolving roles in a diverse dynamic and interdependent world. And Dr. Powell shared how quick the world is changing. Oh, thanks. Thank you so much. Thank you, Catherine. He shared how how quick the world is changing and how we need to stay ahead of curves to serve our students as they change. And uh I believe we do that here at Napa Valley College with career education. The second quote is from the Chancellor's Office website, defining career education about preparing for a livelihood that can support you and your family while doing something you love. And I liked the word love in that. We have robust and responsive and relevant career education programs here, and we have incredible staff that are doing the work. So I want to hold up and highlight their work. Next slide, please. Actually, can we go back real quick? Thank you. This uh you can see in that photo, that's Dr. Powell, and this is a short-term training program that we have that's specially funded, free to participants that trains individuals for careers in transportation distributions, uh distribution and logistics, which is aligned with labor market needs here. One of the individuals of that graduating cohort is now an employee at Napa Valley College.
Oh, great.
Next slide. Thanks. So this is the uh ed code language that you'll find that um supports this presentation to trustees. The three main points have to do with meeting labor market demand, uh not duplicating programs, and that means not duplicating even with our other educational providers. And I think uh this campus does a great job of partnering with our adult school, so they're not offering things that we're offering, even aligning pathways with the adult school. Also, the third one is demonstrated effectiveness measured by employment, completion and success of our students. We want our training to have currency and to have value for our students. So we want it to mean something when they go meet with employers, and we want, we wanted to advance them. Next slide, please. So this is a list of what we currently have. Uh, you'll see a new item, GIS is launching this semester. I appreciate Professor Carrie Roughly for all of her work with that. Um, to advance that, there's alignment with our viticulture program with that work. I'm excited about that. Next slide, please. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. I should highlight the pictures. In the, in the photo, you'll see uh Gary Stronem, he's uh our DDGT instructor. He teaches in a high flex format, which I love. That means students can take it either in person, online synchronously, and he records it so for working individuals, they can do it asynchronously. So I commend and hold up his work. And our culinary program has greatly advanced in the last year and a half, uh culminating with the a restaurant experience that some of the trustees attended uh at the Upper Valley Campus and that the current enrollment projections are high for this fall. So I'm grateful for that, too. That's Stan Hitchcock. Yeah, where we've got new equipment for the machining and tooling program, and there's also a photo of a student in our winery. Excellent. So this uh this data, I think these are important talking points. Uh, this came out originally of the work of the RP group that studied, the ori- the original work was completers and levers, and it went, it tracked people who left before they completed a certificate or degree, and those who completed. And it was interesting in career ed that often students self-select in to take courses to advance their skills and leave in advance, but not, might not be captured as a completer. So this, I'm grateful for this data. This shows that the twelve dollars is the overall change in hourly wages after completing a career training at Napa Valley College. Many of our students are working, but ninety-four percent uh reported being very satisfied or satisfied with their training at the campus. Uh, next slide, please. Um, we want, always want trustees to be aware of programs that may have viability issues. Uh, in working with Dr. Moore on the Office of Academic Affairs, we identified these three programs to look at uh for the upcoming academic year and work collectively with faculty and industry partners about potential next steps. So photography is uh currently under review. There's no full-time instructor. Uh, and there's a question about programmatically, about where it sits. Uh, all of you, I believe, are aware of the suspension of the police academy, and so we're looking at what's offered in the region, if it's duplicative and at expenses and viability here on this campus. And vocational nursing also is under review, and we're looking at um how it fits. And so these decisions will be made uh through a thoughtful and intentional process over this coming academic year. Next slide, please. Uh, core indicators, this uh I thought, thank uh Dr. Robin Wornell for his data. You can see that Napa Valley College overall performance is at seventy-eight point three percent. Just a point three above the institution's set standard. But in career education, we have a seventy-seven percent uh successful completion rate among credit students, which shows that often individuals who select into career programs have definitive goals. They want to compete and advance into employment. Uh, means we can help meet those needs by how we schedule classes, allowing students to finish uh, I think an example would be a welder's assistant certificate in one semester rather than the course of the whole year. Many adults who are looking for training don't want to spend a lot of time. They want to get to work. And so I think it's our job to meet those needs and schedule as appropriate. Next slide, please. This is not intentionally hard to read, but I just wanted to ref- reference that the labor market data, I was grateful that uh our partners at the North Bay Workforce Alliance uh and the Napa Economic Development Department began holding workforce collaborative meetings that I was invited to. They funded a a report um through Lightcast and had the report, and we were able to present the report here at the PAC Theater, and Dr. Powell served on a panel. Uh, the report looked at labor market projections for the next ten years. It talked about alignment with our partner in high schools. Uh, so our C cap courses, which are career and technical education courses that are offered in high schools, how they align with our group, how we can potentially have chaired advisory boards, which I'm excited about because we need to continue to meet with industry. But this is just to share that the third question about labor market demand, it is in alignment with what we're currently offering at Napa Valley College. Next slide, please. Um, this is a short-term workforce development that complements our BWT program and and other areas. But in three weeks, an individual who can come in for a free training, uh become OSHA certified and forklift certified, and advance either into employment or to a Teamster Fund apprenticeship Program to become a licensed truck driver. Um, when I first started here, I got to present to local rotaries, and it was shared that I just happen to have a trucking program. And rather than investing in trucks, we did this through a partnership with the West Oakland Job Center. Uh, I really admire and appreciate Letitia Narango, who's in the photo there. She's a, a member of our workforce development team. She's also a social worker, and now she's a certified forklift operator, which is very cool because in career ed, when you go through and you know what the training is, it's an example of training to what we're doing. So I want to hold her up. Next slide, please. So apart from the uh, the three areas of study that were highlighted that will be looked at over the academic year, I think uh the answer to the three questions that are required for this report are fundamentally yes. Um, qua- both quantitatively and qualitatively, uh we get to visit and hear that from our students, so we're happy for those outcomes, but we need to continue to innovate and adapt, and I think align and partner. Again, we don't want to be uh duplicative with what's being offered. We want to merge what our high schools and adult schools are doing, so it's an easy pathway into Napa Valley College. That's aligned. We have seven new goals that were shared with the Board of Trustees from the Strategic Enrollment Management work that was done this past year. I've gotten to work on that group, and it's aligned with this, reaching individuals that are twenty-five and older, that might want to retool or re-career, reaching to the high schools, but helping our students who are at the high schools potentially come here and compete, which I'm grateful for. Next slide, please. So I think I did, I think I did that. Non-credit is a unique opportunity to partner more with the community to enhance career education, and I'm grateful for the work of Chantel Regal, who has developed short-term non-credit courses that could potentially overlay with our adult school partners, will also enhance the employability of our current career, career students. So I'm excited about those next steps and get to work with Dr. Moore and Chantel on how to deploy those, hopefully starting spring of this academic year. Uh, next slide, please. This is just a quote that I like. We're always adjusting the sales. I'm happy to take any of the trustees in tours of our career ed programs. I know many of you have seen them. But I think that when you get behind the walls of the welding and manufacturing area, it's really cool, the winery as well. Uh, do you have the training teach in here on campus? The advanced culinary courses we're doing at the Upper Valley Campus, which is officially designed for that type of training? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from any trustees?
So each of our uh career education programs is required to have industry advisory boards. So all of the programs that were listed there convene industry partners to ask about curriculum, get feedback on curriculum, talk about job placement. Um, it varies from program to program. We have a large partnership with the Viggers Association, because our BWT program that continues to grow. There has been work over the past probably eighteen months with the North Bay Workforce Alliance in Napa Valley, um, or the Napa County Office of Education for Workforce Coalition, and discussion about how to engage employers in certain on certain pathways that we can work with collectively, so it's not redundant. It's often a high school program will reach out to the same employer that a college program reached out. So how can we align that? Um, but overall, the employers want more people right now. And they also want people trained up to a certain level so they can enter middle skilled jobs in parents. That's the space that we want to be in. And I think we want to train to living wage. Sometimes we get contacted about the programs that might not, you know, where there might be a need. And if it's part of the path, I understand that, but we want to train where people earn well and can live in private. It's across the board. The, the at the summit that we held, it showed that seventy-two percent of employment in the Napa Valley circles around one industry, and the jobs related to that industry are hospitality, culinary, which we're growing both those areas, viticulture, but when you look at employment opportunities, it's pretty much across the board. Uh, I think we continue to train to where the needs are and the pipeline is. Um, there's discussion about, like, some of the places that we have visited have talked about, you know, H one visas to bring people over to work in the industry here because it's bringing some people in where there's a need. Sometimes the jobs don't pay enough for people to live in the county, so people are coming in from out of the county to take jobs here. Whereas uh it was more systematically designed. People could be working their time as they advanced through a pathway, but there needs to be support. Often housing is cited. So when I get to talk to community members and talk about what we're doing with the housing project, employers can be hurt by that. And some employers at larger properties have looked about providing employee housing.
Um, trustee Fishon?
Yeah, I just wanted to offer you personal thanks um and and to, I, I signed up for the forklift class myself. Today, I think that it's a great opportunity, and anybody listening might want to consider the same. It's a free class, and it starts in just a couple of weeks. You can find it by going on the website and searching forklift. You can't miss it.
Thank you, trustee Fishon.
Thank you very much.
And um, have we talked to the Napa Valley? I think it's Napa Valley. Um, is it just farm workers association? But they do a lot of trainings for um staff, or not staff, yeah, winery staff um and farm worker staff um or farm, farming staff. Um, it would be great if we could align some of those like forklift trainings to go with their trainings that they already do in-house. Um, I just see so much social media of um some of their students that, you know, go through their leadership trainings, and they're just so excited to do something more and and expand their learning, that it would be great to kind of get them um roped into ours, in our services, in our classes, um when they're already excited about something like that.
I, yeah, I would like to connect with them. I, we do work with the grape growers. The grape growers came to our um industry advisory board for our viticulture and winery technology program. And from that, we did an eighteen-hour training in welding for grape growers who use welding skills in the vineyards. So the more crossover and alignment, I'd be happy to follow up.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Not, thank you so much, Dr. Marriott.
Thank you.
Went to item twelve, administrative services, twelve point one, Alucian Managed Services Work Order.
Thank you, trustee Deluna. On June tenth, twenty twenty-two, the college uh suffered from a cyber attack. And the cyber attack brought the institution to its knees, as many of you remember. And uh while we are still recovering in some respects to the impacts of that cyber attack, what it did reveal to us was that we had um under-invested over the years in our, and not only our IT uh infrastructure, but our ability to bring the right personnel to the campus who uh were qualified to, to meet the needs of, of a changing educational environment, highly dependent on technology, uh and frankly, as, as it revealed to me personally, how truly dependent we are, how uh to, to technology and how that's changed over the last ten years and twenty years. Since that time, we have invested uh over three million dollars, mostly in hardware and infrastructure uh in, in with great thanks to the HERF funds uh to, to replace equipment and and desktop devices so that they uh could better withstand security challenges in a di- in addition to provide better services to students. In addition to uh equipment, uh uh we have been looking at how best and how uh uh how to address the challenge of attracting, keeping, attracting and keeping qualified talent to support our I, IT efforts. Well, what we know, I'll share with you uh some obvious signs. It's been difficult to attract the right personnel, to keep the right personnel, and to pay the right personnel based on our salary schedules. What we needed was a deeper bench, and what we needed was the ability to call on resources that we couldn't afford in the moment um uh to a, a firm or consultant that could help us right away in terms of managing and advancing our IT program. We have uh identified a managed services um um group. They happen to be the Alucian Group. You may know Alucian. They are, uh they also provide our software, our enterprise-based software. Uh, we've been with Alucian on an enterprise basis in a software, from a software perspective since two thousand and three. As I looked at uh managed solutions, uh uh my conversations with them uh continued because of their uh access to our, and familiarity with our software, in addition to their vast experience uh supporting IT uh programs across the country. I spoke uh to Apple Valley College, who is a college most similar to us in terms of what we need in California and, and the size of our organization and institution. By the way, the CBO at Apple Valley is a former CBO here, so he knows John Nolan. Uh, he knows us and about us, and so it was uh, it was good to get acquainted, but I would have preferred to not talk about cyber attacks when we chatted. What came of that was um a proposal uh from Alucian that we have been uh developing over the last several months uh to provide a managed uh uh IT solution from Alucian. Uh, last month, the uh, the team of four, uh, maybe the FBI crew, I think, maybe that's who they were. The team of four presented um the proposal to you, and at that time, we uh committed to bringing back the contract uh for Alucian to you for consideration. The contract is a five-year agreement. Um, in some cases, these agreements go five years, and an institution is well positioned to take it from there, if you will. That remains to be seen, given uh where we are uh as a small institution, but that's certainly a possibility. The, the annual cost to the um, to the agreement is a million, one forty-nine thousand dollars. That's a lot of money. That one million, one forty-nine is offset, offset by some savings that we realize in our IT budget, mostly in open positions that were funded last year. So the annual impact is about seven hundred fifty thousand as compared to last year's IT budget. This year's budget, the, the impact because of, they'll be starting a little later in the year is about five hundred fifty thousand dollars. So with that, I am proposing uh and would request your consideration of adopting uh a managed services agreement with the Alucian Company, and would welcome uh any questions. We have a few of the FBI online here. It looks like they're all four here. Uh, so they are certainly here to, to answer any questions.
Any questions from any trustees?
Yeah, Jim, my main question is that we have been listening to you talk about the budget every meeting and we seem to be doing well. Is this, this is a significant cost and I'm just wondering how that's going to affect the budget going forward.
This proposal, the cost of this is included in the tentative budget that you adopted in, um, June. And so, uh, the impact has already been felt certainly in terms of this year's budget. Uh, so, so I don't have a concern there and, and because we realize some additional revenues, uh, and, and through property taxes, I think we're going to be fine. You also recall that we've realized some savings through SERP one and SERP two. And so, um, our ability to address this financially, uh, I have great confidence in. Thank you.
I, I had one question and I may have asked this in the last board meeting, so I apologize if I'm being redundant. But what if we need equipment or more systems? Does this include some of that stuff?
The hardware and infrastructure will remain our responsibility. Uh, how we manage our IT systems, our governance, our internal governance, uh, developing priorities, developing dashboards that indicate where we are in specific areas, developing timelines, uh, better communication, abstinence of communication to our senior administrators, uh, good input from senior administrators about what we consider priorities, uh, and improved security stance, which is, which is, uh, one of the, uh, criteria that I pushed hard, security and reliability. So trustee Iverson, uh, we, we, they won't be buying us any additional computers. That will remain our responsibility. Gentlemen, would any of you, um, from Alucian want to extend on that?
Yeah, I think, um, our goal will be make sure that the expenditures that you do make for equipment are the most effective. Um, our experience in higher education, we can tell, uh, our, our associates which work well, which don't. We've had that experience across the country, across the globe. Uh, and so our goal will be to make sure that your investment in that equipment, uh, brings the maximum value to the school.
And just to add to that, uh, Jim and, and trustees, um, because of our national scope, the fact that we work with hundreds of colleges and universities across the country, uh, many of which we are leading and managing all or significant part of their IT function. Uh, we are constantly negotiating with vendors. And as a result of that, uh, we're typically able to get you much better deals, so to speak, uh, because of our national negotiation capabilities. So with respect to any future hardware that you might need, although I understand that you have invested quite a bit, or any other technologies of such, uh, we have a very distinct advantage in being able to get you the very best deals possible. These vendors know who we are and we've negotiated with them many times over for many years. Uh, so we know how far we can go with them. So that works out very, very well.
Thank you.
Motion for approval.
There a second?
A second.
Trustee Iverson and trustee Baker, um, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you and thank you all for being here.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Looking forward to working with you.
You too. And item twelve point two, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four unrestricted general fund, general fund eleven, remedies and expenditures budget update as of July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Reeves?
I think we're at a place now where trustee Olson can give this report.
Let's see.
We are at a point in our budget year, uh, where it's a very quiet time and that is because, um, we are closing our books and, and working on our audit. However, um, uh, uh, obviously expenditures continue. I will share with you, this is a fairly static report with mostly good news. Um, our revenues, uh, the right column, uh, this is twelve twelve. Remember this is a twelve, twelfth month of the, of the fiscal year. Uh, and so you'll see some changes in that right-hand column as we, as we close the books and we finalize, uh, the categorization of funds and reclassify the areas where we, we can and, and should. Uh, we're at a hundred percent, uh, total revenues. Uh, we are, I think last month we were just shy of that. We are seeing our supplemental property taxes come in. It's not reflected here, but our property taxes will exceed our budget this year and we will be at a, a bit over a hundred percent in total revenue. Our expenses, uh, continue to track below budget. You can see our salaries are at ninety-six percent and our benefits are at ninety-one percent. Those are significant. Um, that's a significant trend for this, this, uh, closed fiscal year. Uh, most importantly, because those two expenses represent eighty-five percent of our annual budget. Our total books and supplies, we're a tad over, about three percent over. Um, uh, that's not of any particular significance. Uh, it's a fair, it's a relatively small number, about one percent of our budget. The budget is about four hundred fourteen thousand. I want to be careful with that number. It doesn't, it doesn't accurately represent books and supplies that we, it looks like we're not purchasing. There's lots of activity in Fund Twelve and lottery funds, um, that where expenditures are made for some of those areas. So, uh, again, while it's a, it's a one percent of our budget, it doesn't, uh, completely reflect our ability to acquire those resources out of Fund Twelve as well. Our total operating supply, supplies are, uh, at one hundred point oh eight. I have to ask, uh, our, our financing, this is really getting too close to perfect. And so, uh, we're, we're looking very good there. And our total expenditures are at ninety-four percent of our budget. So we'll exceed our revenues by, uh, over a hundred percent this year. And we've under, uh, spent certainly based on our budget ninety-four percent. So, uh, trustee Olson, I'm, I'm sorry to say I erased that number that you referenced last time. Um, but I would assure you that, that the, um, the fund balance or the reserves will increase beyond what we projected last year. And I'm, uh, again reluctant, uh, to give you a number. Uh, but I think, uh, I think you'll be, uh, you, you'll be pleasantly pleased with how this finally rolls out as we complete our, our, uh, financial close and our audit. So that would conclude my report and would certainly be open to any questions.
I have a, a quick question. Why is the temporary faculty over budget?
My, my, uh, take on the numbers is that, uh, we were, it looks like we were, um, under on permanent faculty. The budget's ninety-six percent. And so, uh, for whatever reason, we were backfilling with part-time faculty there.
It's maybe, um, was that affected by the SERP and people we lost there or?
It, it, it quite possibly could. The other, the other dynamic here is we could have been offering more sections because of demand, but I can't answer that specifically. Certainly we're shifting some of our funds we're devoting to full-time faculty to part-time faculty for perhaps some of the SERP, um, um, and perhaps because we're offering more sections.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, Mr. Reeves. We'll move on to item fourteen, um, reports. Is there anybody on Zoom? Okay. Danielle, since you're here, would you like to go first?
Can you hear me? Yes. Um, I'm really excited to kick off a new semester with you all. This is going to be a good year, I think, for all of us. Um, I wanted to just report that in June, in early June, four classified senators went to the Classified Leadership Institute, uh, conference together and did a lot of, um, training and networking and learning at the conference. So they brought back some really good info for our Senate, which I would call kind of still budding baby. Uh, budding baby, is that a thing? Um, anyway, so we're working on some really specific things, um, that I think are really important and so does the executive board of our Senate. One is going to be like restructuring our Senate in the first place because, um, we're having a, a rather low participation rate and a lot of offices in our bylaws that are unfilled. And, um, so we're going to be working on restructuring. We're looking at a whole bunch of community college, uh, classified senates in California to try to get a better idea of what ours could look like and how we could be the most effective and efficient. Um, we're also working on rewriting our bylaws. We, we, we're biting off a lot. Um, we're rewriting our bylaws because they're outdated, like so many things, and they really need to just be, um, made clearer, uh, brought into present time and then also reflecting whatever the restructuring that the, the Senate body decides to approve. Um, we're also going to participate as much as we can in shared governance, like starting with, um, September twenty-ninth, Dr. Mora, I think is the first work party for, um, helping to edit, uh, administrative procedures that we need to work on for, uh, for accreditation and to get, um, our APs up to, up to par. Um, so I'm hoping to have a lot of participants from our Senate working with everybody to, you know, have a good, um, like really good work done on these APs and get that going. Um, and sorry, I need classes here. Oh, I just wanted to say, um, how much I really love Janet and Bill's presentations yesterday and today at Flex Day, yesterday on shared governance and today on the VPs and APs and the process. And, um, just, just to give like a huge thanks to those two for all of their guidance and wisdom over the last year. I feel like they've taught us all so much. I'm super grateful and I love this. I guess my last, my final sentence will just be that I think Janet's words about how this, this work of shared governance is really about shared responsibility for this piece that we all love and work in and value and, and not so much about power or, I think she said her something or other. I can't remember her exact words, but I just loved her, um, her sentiment of shared responsibility. And so I think, uh, that's a really good way to move forward for, in my mind, for the school year. Going to kind of keep that at center and, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you so much and thank you for being here as well. I love that you call them work parties or?
Yes.
Yeah, it makes it fun. Yeah, great spin on that. And, um, who's next? So Ms. Tapia? Christine?
Hi. Yes. Good evening, trustees, colleagues and members of the community. Um, your administrators began this academic year with a reaffirmation of her commitment to fostering an equitable, inclusive and just college environment. So earlier this month, we all engaged in an opportunity to deepen our understanding of diversity in, in the first of a series of DIAA trainings. Um, and so, you know, we believe that through ongoing learning, honest dialogue and conscious actions, it's possible to create a campus that promotes and practices cultural humility and equity advancement. And that is going to be a major priority for the administrative senate this year. Um, as my colleague Danielle said, we also recognize that we are carrying over critical work that began last year now as a much smaller team. So we have a lot of work to do in planning and policy shaping. And we also look forward to those policy parties. Um, accreditation is coming. There is also strategic enrollment management work that needs to continue and improvements in our technology and infrastructure. Uh, and that's just to name a few. So this year is going to be extremely busy for all of us, but it also provides us a prime opportunity to engage in true shared governance, as we've heard, um, you know, Janet, um, and Bill speak about yesterday and today. So I, for one, um, want to say that I am very encouraged by Dr. Powell's leadership and him his, you know, getting us all together, early, in early dialogue among administrative faculty, classified and student leaders, um, in the spirit of fostering that transparency, the trust in a shared sense of ownership in the direction of our institution. So that concludes my report. Thank you for your time and I hope everyone has a great start to their fall semester.
You too. Thank you so much. Dr. Kronzer?
Hello. Um, this is my first chance to attend the board trustees meeting. Very thankful to be here. Um, uh, to share my report, I would like to acknowledge that we just concluded our fall twenty twenty-three flex days. I had the opportunity to meet trustee Jason. He literally helped me put up posters on a wall. So I want to give a shout out there. Thank you, Jason, for helping with that process and just being there in direct service. It was nice to see you. Um, this day, our committees got together, so they've set their plans and schedules that will carry out through the rest of the semester. We're starting to do that work, uh, that Christine and Danielle have already mentioned. And in relation to that, we are acknowledging the situation we find ourselves in, in terms of the updates that are pending, the reviews we need to do and the work that needs to continue, also coming from the chancellor's office in relation to our BPs and APs. Um, we are meeting on this following Tuesday, the fifteenth, the Executive Committee of Academic Senate will get together. And part of our focus is really going to be looking at how we plan to negotiate and classify some of those new policies as whether they are ten plus one matters or non-ten plus one. So we're going to start there. But I am thankful to see that there have been open dialogues between not only the administrative senate, but the classified senate, and that we've had these opportunities to get together and to share and start building some relationships and some community. And I think that we're going to move forward in a positive way. That concludes our report.
Great. Thank you so much and thank you for being here as well. And, um, item fifteen, um, Dr. Powell, President Cabinet Reports.
Okay. Well, I've already spoken about the educational master plan. There is some more detail in my written report. If you'd like to know a little bit more about the process. I did also want to comment on our flex days. So this is my first, uh, flex at Napa Valley College yesterday and today. And I have to say, I, I really want to acknowledge Dr. Kronzer, who did so much to help get flex together in terms of planning down to, from the biggest thematic questions to the smallest details. He was on top of everything, um, and was very open to working with our other groups to ensure that our sessions, um, that are offered by other areas could be included and integrated into our professional development days. And, um, my experience of working with the faculty and our classified professional colleagues and administrators, this, these two days were very positive in tone. I think people were, um, showing a level of dedication and excitement coming back this fall semester. And I think it really is a good start to the year. So that was a really great experience. Um, I did also want to briefly highlight some enrollment information. Um, for summer, we're still awaiting, uh, positive attendance. Some reporting is still coming in. So we're still anticipating being very close to summer of last year, so relatively flat in terms of enrollment. Uh, but as you can see, um, fall as of August ninth, uh, yesterday, that we are looking quite a bit up from fall of twenty twenty-two. And this, these numbers probably will hold pretty steady. We also have a number of late start classes for people who don't, you know, this start doesn't fit their, their life or work schedule. And so we anticipate that those enrollments will further climb. So we anticipate fall will, will be quite a bit larger than last fall. And I'll continue to provide those updates because we have a number of classes that are coming online throughout the semester. So that's also very positive news, um, and looking forward to a great fall semester.
You mentioned, I think it was last month, that the non-credit, uh, course enrollment, it was anticipated that it would be kind of ramping up as we got closer. Is that still true? Like we're just not quite right there or are those numbers fairly, um, Or are those numbers fairly reasonable to be fixed?
Non-credit will continue to ramp up. That tends to register late, like right near the start or even the first week of classes. So we'll see those numbers change over time.
Hey, good evening, trustees and good evening, community. It's exciting to be here for a new fall semester. So my report time, and talk to you a little bit about some of the activities we, we did this, this summer. In particular, talk about the STEM Summer Bridge Program. Kudos to, to our Dean of HSI Initiative, Luisa Casado and his team for putting on a pretty amazing experience for students this summer with the Summer Bridge Program that they offered. And really, you can see it was a combination of counseling courses, of the STEM areas, the math and, and biology, engineering, different sciences, and then opportunity to do some, some STEM research as well as take some field trips. So, you know, this is an excellent opportunity for our students to come in and begin their experience in Napa Valley College really by infusing in the STEM field. So, and this is really, it's focused on our underrepresented students. So it's around really making sure that they connect and then offering this, this powerful experience. If you go to the next slide. Here's a picture of some of the students at one of their, their field trips. They went to, to Shell Beach and Buttega, Digga Bay as well. And again, just for many of our students who, this, this in itself is, is pretty important because they may not have been out of even this area. So just to experience the coast in this way and to learn, engage is a, is a pretty powerful activity. So this is something that we hope to continue to grow as, as we move forward. Over the last few years, a number of students have been served and supported through, through the Summer Bridge. So, next slide. Do you wanna let everybody know that we will be engaging in Student Affairs? We'll have, we're gonna have our retreats on Friday, August twenty fifth. I am bringing in co-facilitators to do that, that work. It's really gonna be around building off of the work that's been done, was done with our managers, but really helping around DEI work, that in particular, helping Student Affairs kind of identify that North Star and work towards doing what we can to increase equity in, in all levels of the work that we're doing. There's lots of things happening at the Valley College right now as far as really trying to understand the experience of students from the beginning, from literally the point that they, they walk onto campus through the entire process. And this retreat we're gonna have is gonna offer us the opportunity to do the deeper dive, gonna ground us in, in some, some pillars to help us guide, guide us in that really important work. So that's happening. And then the last slide, I believe. So a couple of, let's save the dates, just wanted to, to highlight, there's a change actually. Our High School Breakfast, we had to change the date from November ninth to November seven, or from, was, I think that is November second, so it will be November ninth. There'll be more of a formal invitation for all board members regarding that. But an excellent opportunity to come and to learn about what we're doing in Student Affairs, at the same time engage with our community partners. So wanted to lift that up. And also Welcome Week will be happening August fifteenth through the sixteenth. So we're hitting the ground running in Student Affairs. And what does this, what does this mean? We're gonna have just general information, tables for our students, a resource fair for our students. Also gonna be doing some virtual workshops for our students. So making sure that we have different modalities and, and how we engage the community. And all the information will be on the website. It'll be a great opportunity for you to come by. If you haven't been on campus, experience our, our Welcome Week on the fourteenth through the sixteenth. And I believe this, this concludes my report.
Thank you. I love seeing that Dr. Carrión is gonna be helping with some of this. Thank you.
I'm pleased to say my report is only two pages this month. Just a few highlights here. We spoke about our twenty-two, twenty-three budget. And now we're moving on quickly to our twenty-three, twenty-four budget. We are scheduling a meeting of the, of the Board's Finance and Budget Committee. Jason, we'll, we'll make sure you get the right time and date on that one. To give you a more in-depth look at what the budget looks like moving forward and how we close out twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three. Our audit work is underway, vigorously underway. And so we are working toward closing out our, our financials and our audits, certainly well before twelve-thirty-one, much like, much different than we did last year. Our institutional technology, we largely address that. Just a reminder that if you're on our systems, we have a new multi-factor authentication system, MFA, which requires an additional step to, to access our systems. Could you scroll down a bit more, Catherine? Our student housing update, if you're driving by at all, you'll notice that they're moving again quite nicely. There, most of those buildings are blue-tarked, which means that the siding and the, the windows are all going in. The drywall is coming in, so it's, it's exciting. The magnitude of the building, I think, surprises people. It is, it is a significant structure and will accommodate, as I mentioned, up to five hundred eighty students. Our implementation team is very active. Right now, we have opened the Student, the River Trail Village Information Office in the library. And the Gray Star Company has hired the Director of Residential Life, who will, who will effectively be the oversight on site there at River Trail Village. They will have a strong liaison, responsibility to our Student Life and Student Affairs staff to be sure that we're coordinating carefully with, with what Gray Star is doing and in the student experience is seamless between the campus and the program there. They will also hire RDCRAs. That's short for Resident Directors and Resident Assistants, who will, some of which will be our current students, will be staffing that side. So again, if you'd like to keep an eye on that, I know Trustee Iverson does, you can link, check the link there and see our progress from day to day. From a facilities perspective, let me touch on two areas. The Ash Landfill. We have come to an agreement with the county on an approach to being sure that our matters are addressed to their satisfaction prior to opening Student Residential Site. And you remember that the concern was the adjacency of the Ash Landfill to Student Residential Site. So we have a process in place there. I would just want to be careful not to describe this as the final solution. It is, it is an interim solution. What might, what might occur is that most of the interim, interim solution becomes the final solution, but the county was unwilling to do that, given how long it might take to have all of this done. But I appreciate the county's cooperation here, and I think we're well on our way to making sure we're open and, and additional assurance of setting us a safe space. We had a, a new development in our facilities area. We had, we, we've, we need to affect repair in our, our, our central plant, which provides AC. So there are some additional expenses. High six figures, I'll say we have a preliminary estimate at high six figures. So Jason brought up the budget. That certainly will be a consideration as we look forward in, in the budgets of those unanticipated costs. So that would conclude my report.
Thank you.
Just a few things for me to add, because a lot of them have been shared already. Today did cap off our Flex Week and really wanna also extend some thanks to Dr. Kronzer, to the entire team that worked on the schedule, that worked on the coordination, all the facilitators, the presenters today. There's a lot of really good information shared today. The workshops around Administrative Procedures Board Policies. We had a session on strategic planning where we actually did some real work on our college mission, vision, and values, our, our mission statement. You know, excellent sessions. I had the chance to open Flex Week also, share, you know, some comments around, you know, just to get us really prepped and hyped for the year, but also to share some, you know, some forward-looking documents, some data to really help inform the pathway for this year in terms of what our future is gonna look like, the activities that we do in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four and beyond. So thank you for that. I also had a chance to present with Doctors Mutsami, Dr. Mora, Dr. Dr. G. Today, we shared data from the National Assessment of Collegiate Campus Climate Student Survey, which really assesses campus climate. And we had a really good, robust discussion with a fairly large crowd of folks from the campus community. Trustee Kishan, thank you as always for attending that, participating in that, that conversation as well. Last Thursday, you heard about our, our Managers and Confidentialists Team. They're the first of four sessions on diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility. This was a direct result of conversations that came out of our Managers Retreat about three or four months ago, where the Managers themselves were saying, this is something that collectively, we need a better shared understanding of definitions, themes, and we need some strategies for how we're going to really work effectively in this space to produce positive outcomes for our students. And so today was the first of four sessions. We have a few more sessions coming this semester. Really excited that session three and four of this workshop is gonna focus on what I call the Student Experience Lifecycle, which is assessing from an equity-based perspective how our students are experiencing, as Dr. G referenced in his report, how they're experiencing their time on campus from the moment they declare interest in attending MVC clear through graduation with the lens of how we can make modifications to improve outcomes for our most disproportionately impacted students. So this will be, you know, theory and, you know, discussion and self-reflection rolled into actual progressive action for the college and help us to really pluck what I keep referring to as the lowest hanging fruit in our, in our institution, which is how, you know, our students experience things that are indirect. We have direct capacity and potential to make, make immediate impacts and improvements. And so really excited for this work and, and thank all the folks who participated. Specifically, wanna call out Charles, the HR team, Dr. Mutsami, her office, for helping to coordinate these activities as well. Storm Cup. Yeah, our Storm Cup coming up on August twenty-eighth at the Napa Valley Country Club. It's gonna start at twelve o'clock with the shotgun start. If you don't golf, you can still come out, have some pizza, have some wine at the pool. We're getting it for thirty. Wanna thank War President Dodd, Dean Jerry Dunlap, the, the entire MVC Athletics Department, and of course, the Napa Valley Country Club for their, their donation of this space. And Trustee Iverson, I know you're, you'll be playing in that and I hope you bring in your golf game. Yes. Thank you for your support in, in that as well. Last update is, I've been invited to serve on what's called the Higher Education Research and Development Institute, or the HERDIE, HERDIE West, the Education Advisory Board. This is, HERDIE is a national organization, which really serves as a forum for meaningful dialogue between business leaders in higher education, specifically college presidents and chancellors of key community colleges around the country. So they're, they're pretty selective in who they want participating. So it's good for us, that Napa Valley College is one of a small number of colleges in California that has been invited to participate in HERDIE West. We actually held our very first virtual meeting on July twenty-seventh. We have our next in-person retreat, which is scheduled in November, just prior to the CCLC Conference in Indian Wells. So more to come on that. It's good for us because it integrates us and connects us with industry. We learned about emerging trends in higher education nationally. It gives us some good ideas of best practices that are happening across the country. So happy to be involved in that and be very humbled that our, that our college was chosen to participate. So, yeah. And that concludes my report and the President's Reports.
Thank you, and congratulations on being asked to be part of that group. Very happy for you and happy for the college. Now we go on to our standing fifteen-point-two Standing Committee and Other Appointment Reports. Nothing to report for the DOS Foundation. We do have a meeting coming up, though. So I think at the end of August, if I'm not mistaken. The Vidiculture and Winery Foundation, Trustee Rios. Audit and Finance Committee, Trustee Baker, nothing? Real Property Committee? The McPherson Distinguished Award and the Dr. Ed Schenck also, I think there's nothing, right? Okay, well, we really are gonna finish early today. That's right, we're very late according to this one. Okay, item fifteen-point-three, Future Agenda Item Request. Anybody? Great, okay, fifteen-point-four, Trustee and Board Chair Reports, and I will start on my left. And Trustee Olson?
I don't have anything to report. I just wanna say I love the energy around, the positive energy around the start to the school year. So I'm wishing everyone here a great beginning of our fall semester.
And Trustee Iverson?
I, no report.
Thank you. And Trustee Kishan?
I attended both days of the Flex, Flex Events. I really enjoyed sitting in community with everybody. As a trustee, I'm only here like one day a month usually, and so I don't know everybody yet, but I will get to know, get to know every single one of you if I get the chance. And I attended Meet Me in the Street in American Canyon last night. And right next to it, a conjoining event, we had a ribbon cutting on the first park in Napa Valley that had disabled accessible equipment. I'm so proud of my city. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, congratulations on that. Great. And I'm sorry, Trustee Alejandro Martinez?
I have nothing to report, but I do wanna let you note that on Friday, nineteen, we are doing a fundraiser for car, car wash. If you guys wanna like help us out, like stop by or something like that, it'll be great on August, August nineteenth, Friday.
And where is that gonna be?
I think it's gonna be like right here, somewhere right here, somewhere right here.
Great, okay, sounds great. Thank you. Trustee Rios?
I picked up my wine before the meeting.
For me outside?
Yeah, you said you don't drink. And I will be playing in the Storm Cup also. So we'll see how Kyle's doing there. Thank you.
Thank you. And Trustee Baker?
Nothing to report.
Yeah, and I just also wanna echo the sentiment that, you know, it's just so exciting to have this excitement around the beginning of the year. We have so much, just so much, so many great things coming down the line. So I'm really, I really appreciate it. And shared governance is shared success as well, right? So I'm just looking forward to that and continuing to acknowledge all the hard work that is being done here. And it's just, it's gonna be, I know it's gonna be a great year, so thank you. And also, I will be at the Storm Cup, but just to cheer everybody on and, and hopefully have something to talk about later. Certain people's game. Right, right, well, I know who I need to keep my eye on. There's a lot of you here. Okay, and we have nothing to continue for closed session. In the future, our next meeting is September fourteenth. And that's all. If there's no objections, we'll adjourn for the evening at, what, six-thirty-seven? Great, thank you. Makes it official, right? I know, way earlier than I even thought.
Why, why is our meeting for fourteenth, it's gonna be the twenty-first?
Something with the budget too, right?